Good afternoon and welcome everyone joining us today. I'm Carolyn Rice, School Board Chair. This workshop of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is hereby convened at 3:30 PM on this 24th day of August 2021. Pursuant to the Virginia State Health Commissioner's Order of Public Health Emergency Statewide Requirement to Wear Masks in K-12 Schools issued August 12, 2021, and Virginia Acts of Assembly Number 1303, Chapter 456, and the CDC's Guidance for K-12 Schools, and the School Board's 2021-22 Reopening Plan adopted August 10, 2021, it's determined physical distancing will be used in school board chambers as a health mitigation strategy. Therefore, there'll be limited public seating available on a first come, first served basis, beginning shortly before the workshop session of the school board meeting. Members of the public will also be able to observe the school board meeting through live streaming on vb schools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. It's the school board's protocol to break at 5:30 PM to prepare for the regular school board meeting to begin at 6:00. At 5:30, the school board will conclude its formal meeting unless the school board votes to continue until 5:45. The informal session will conclude no later than that point to allow the board and administration to prepare for the regular school board meeting at 6 o'clock. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please announce the school board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in school board chambers is Chairwoman Rice, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Manning, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Holtz, and Ms. Riggs. And attending via Zoom presently is Ms. Owens.
Thank you. Ms. Owens is participating via Zoom due to health reasons. And Mrs. Weems is absent from this workshop due to a family matter.
Point of order, Ms. Chairman. The rules that you just said to everybody, that you quoted of distancing and wearing a mask are not being applied. You need to do something about that. Our rules either matter or they don't.
And Mrs. Holtz will be addressing that right now within Admin Matters if you will allow me.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. So, the first admin matter, and this is to clarify, school board meetings moving forward as conveyed in the emails, this is a moment now, we have this opportunity here together as a school board to clarify and make very clear what our intention is, and I would suggest we put it to a vote during the formal meeting, of the mitigations to be in place for school board meetings. Last year essentially it mirrored what was, so the president and I have staff here to clarify for me, but presently it mirrors the mitigation factors in the schools and in this school admin building, and we're speaking about mask compliance, absence and authorization, and social distancing of, did I, is there anything I should add to the present mitigations in place so that, staff, did I get that right? So with that, I'd like to know if there's consensus to move that forward as an act, as an item to vote on in the formal meeting, or if there's any comment about any suggested change in course of action. Mrs. Manning.
Madam Chair, we are a municipal building, and this is a public meeting, which is governed by different rules as it was back under, when the governor had his mandate, it was governed under different rules than our schools. So I'm not sure, and I've asked you to provide me documentation with how this applies, that a public meeting is the same as what occurs in one of our school buildings, and you have not provided that information to me. As well as if someone has an exemption, that if you are using the Health Commissioner's mandate, it does state that there are exemptions. So I would like to know how you're addressing that.
And I did share that those would be addressed during Admin Matters, so here we are. So I am going to ask staff to weigh in on this again for the rationale of why last year we had the protocols.
Okay, respectfully, Madam Chair, this is a public meeting of a governing body, not a staff meeting. So I'm asking you as the chair, who made this decision unilaterally, you are the leader of our board, staff is not.
I will correct you with that. That was not my unilateral decision by any means, and this is our first opportunity together here, our first school board meeting since the last one.
Right, and the decision was made.
So I am just offering the staff to provide additional rationale because it is the school board who ultimately votes on this. I agree with you on that. And so to make that determination, which we're not voting on in workshop, I real-
So staff made the determination for a public meeting already?
They, they-
Based upon this, these rules in our document that was published?
They came up with a reasonable interpretation based on the reopening, on the opening plan and the bylaws that you provide for the superintendent and chair to proceed under, if it's a reasonable circumstance, and I made it clear that this was our first opportunity now, and trust moving forward, we will certainly be sure that school board meetings are treated in the same vote or as a separate vote to avoid this in the future. So I, if we do proceed with this, I would ask maybe our school board attorney to draft what the actual language would be, but again, does anybody, as to, oh, Mrs. Anne, Mrs. Hughes?
I'm next, I believe. I just want to make sure she saw Ms. Hughes' hand. I'd just like to say that it's been clarified now that this building belongs to the school system, and even though, you know, there was a question whether or not we could make a rule affecting this building like we do our schools, and it's been clarified that yes, we can make that rule, that we can decide for ourselves. So even though this is a public meeting, our chair has the authority to make a decision on what is appropriate for this meeting. And I do, I would like to bring it to a formal vote so that we can formally vote on it this after, later this evening, and we can let people know that yes, we have taken a formal vote on this, and we all, and that we would all agree on these mitigation standards that we're expecting, not only for our meeting, but for, you know, what we expect from students in schools. So as long as we can, as this variant is out there and is causing problems in our society, especially in our city the way it is, I think we need to, we need to make sure that we're following as much mitigation standards as possible.
So, I actually do have a medical exemption, and you're all aware of that, because I turned in the paperwork after you kicked me out last year. And the only person that I'm really sitting within six feet of is someone that would be in my pod since we're regularly together at events outside of here. You're more than six feet away from me, stay that way, and you should be fine. I'm not right on top of anybody, you're not supposed to discriminate against me because I have an exemption, and staff is not responsible for how school board meetings run, you are. So you should be able to answer that, and we should be able to get on with our actual business.
Yes, and I have answered that that is what we're here today to do, to vote as a school board, so I just want to show of hands a consensus on voting on this as an action item in the formal meeting. Yes, Ms. Franklin?
So one thing that I just wanted to check on is, you know, and I think that part of my concern or question about this is, you know, with the state of emergency or the reasoning for the mask mandate and stuff, are we going to also discuss the COVID leave policy as well? Because I believe that if we're in a state of emergency, we should also have COVID-
We're, we're, well, wait, and with all respect, that's an excellent question, but not for this time and place. We need to focus on this because we have two very important presentations planned for this workshop, so I'm sorry that I have to keep moving with that, but hold that thought. And the second matter is, as was raised, the question before the board is whether the board wishes to continue the practice that was agreed, that was agreed upon last year, that school board members seeking a, an accommodation are directed to the Health Services Coordinator to be kept, to be treated in a confidential manner as it was last year, and there were reasons given at the time why it wouldn't be human resources. And so that's the second matter that I feel needs to be solidified with a vote in the formal meeting. Is there any quick question or comment about that? Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, you can vote as much as you want, it's still going to be a violation of the law if you require the documentation.
Okay. All right, so Mrs. Lynetti, can we ask you to draft some language for, for the voting later? Okay. Uh, Mrs. Franklin?
Oh, yes. I would like to just ask respectfully that we are allowed to have a moment of silence for the military, the families, and the Afghans that are going through this struggle right now in this, this, you know, situation overseas, and just maybe have a moment of silence for them.
You mean the, the American families?
Well, for the military, the American families, and the Afghans as well, that are going through this.
When I suggested to Mrs. Franklin that she pose it now, it would be, it would be in the formal meeting, just to see if there's consensus on that, because we don't have a formal process in place, but-
Yeah, we have a very large military population, I think it'd be respectful to be able to acknowledge them.
Mrs. Riggs?
We already have a moment of silence, why can't we, when we do, we can dedicate it-
Okay.
-to our American families, our servicemen that served over there, the Afghans that helped us, the Americans, let's dedicate that moment of silence, would that be okay?
That's fine, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else during Admin Matters before we get to our first presentation? Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I asked this via email, and you said that we would talk about it in Admin Matters, and I never received a response after that. Regarding the warning letters that you've been sending out to citizens that the school board has never approved, I would just like to know under what authority you sent those?
Okay. Thank you for that reminder. So the, there was, there was widespread interest among sports, board members in coming up with some sanctions for certain behaviors that were, that just were alarming to not just us, but the public as well. And so I worked with staff, and we, we worked very hard to treat it as confidentially as possible, and, and it was a warning letter, which is frankly a courtesy to give somebody a, nobody's, we're hoping, I'm hoping that we wouldn't need to follow up again, but nobody has any real other alternative. So unless, until such time that somebody can come up with a better alternative, it is our, our responsibility, and mine as the chair, to run meetings with order and decorum. And it's very obvious that some of these incidents and outbursts have been anything but, so.
Okay, my question still wasn't asked, under what authority do you have? Because our bylaws specifically state, and the law specifically states that one board member cannot act on behalf of other board member, or of the whole board unless given permission to do so, but, and that would be by a vote, not behind the scenes consensus. I never even received a phone call about that, I didn't even know that letter, can I finish? I did not even know that letter was, those letters were going out, those letters contained factually incorrect information, and so you are binding the board legally when you're sending stuff out on behalf of the board. So I'm calling on you to not do that anymore unless this board takes a vote to direct you to do so.
And I will qualify that the chair is responsible for decorum as I've been-
In the meetings, this was outside, something you did outside of our meeting, not during our meeting.
I will have Dr. Robertson speak to one piece of fact.
Madam Chair, this is a school board matter, not a document.
There's a single matter, since you, since you mentioned misinformation, he's willing to speak to this one piece, Dr. Robertson.
Let's see. Respectfully, I'm not sure if we're answering the right question. I know that today we had to send out email to staff in the school administration building, directing them to leave through the back door this afternoon and walk around in their cars, because in the last couple of meetings, there have been comments made to staff going out to their cars from people gathered in the parking lot. We clearly have had some people who, a small number, who have made some decisions to make insightful comments that would be characterized as taunting. The approach with the letters was simply to continue to make them aware of the rules of decorum in the meeting. There was a statement within one of the letters attributed to a comment on August the 10th that was actually made on July the 20th.
It was never made. It was never made, I watched the videos, it was never made. It's factually incorrect information in that letter, and I think the constituent is owed an apology, and I don't think those letters should be going out without approval of the board.
And so that's a matter the board can weigh in on as well, I mean, Mrs. Melnick? Were you up or not? Mrs. Anderson?
I would ask that, that we actually have a formal vote on that, and that we would give our chair the permission, that if people have been insightful and rude and obnoxious in our meetings, that they do get a letter of warning, letting them know that our decorum, we expect people to come to this room and, and act like, you know, like they know how to act as a part of our decorum that we expect to happen. So, you know, if people are going to jeer and yell and scream and use profanity, and all of that happened at the last meeting, the jeering, the yelling, the screaming, and profanity, and obscene gestures were all part of what happened during that meeting, and it was embarrassing, not only as a school board member and a former teacher sitting here, but there were students in this room and children.
If I may, can I ask Mrs. Lynetti, would there be a way that we can have an offline discussion about the best method of alerting board members or?
As I mentioned, I'd be happy to provide you with a memorandum explaining what the First Amendment rights are and the rules involving decorum in a school board meeting, I can do that by memorandum to you, I can present it to you either in closed session or an open session, explain to you what the rules are and what your options are. You do have the ability to control decorum in the room, it is the process with warning letters and limitation of access letters, and mentioned ban letters is a process that we've had in place for many years in the school administration building. It does fall to the chair to control the decorum issues, and there, there is an appeal that could go to the school board, or depending who issues the, the letter or warning to, so warning is not something you would appeal, but you could appeal a limitation of access or ban letter. If it's administrator, there is a procedure in place for administrators' appeal to be handled, or the school board could develop its own procedure, but it is within the realm of the chair to control decorum and order, and warnings and letters to the public are part of that. So I can either send it to a memo, I can present it to you in a school board meeting either in closed session or an open session, however you prefer to have that done.
I'm inclined to ask for a memo at this point, so we, and we can therefore get on with this workshop, because I do think it's a matter that we do need to resolve, you know, with what the will of the board is. So is everybody agreeable to that?
How was that, Carolyn?
Yes, ma'am.
One of the problems with this is deciding what is and isn't okay is very subjective. I'm sure the lady that referred to some of us as perverted homicidal death cult didn't receive a letter, but I also, not long after I got elected, went to a city council meeting and watched our former chair, and Ms. Riggs were there, and when people got up and spoke and said something that our former chair didn't like, she was yelling, "Sit down, we've heard enough of that." So, you know, modeling that behavior as a former teacher, that's fine, as a former chair, you behave the same way that you have a problem with now. And do you think you deserved a letter?
Madam Chair, with all due respect-
That is not, not what happened, so I would like to answer that, so the policy knows that never happened.
No, 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 no. We're back, we're back on topic with the workshop, we've agreed that we will cover this in a memorandum, and, and it's a fair point, and in this case, I can only say that it was on not just what, what happened, but how often it happened, and I think we do need to get some further resolution to this.
Madam Chair, please, can we please start? It's 3:51, we started at 3:31, we have school opening in two weeks, and we have people watching this that are very interested in what, what our staff has to say.
So Mr. Jack Freeman, if you would kindly begin our first presentation of the evening.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. As we approach this new school year, we wanted to share some information related to transportation and water testing. We'll start with the transportation update, and I'd like to invite Mr. James Lash, our Executive Director for Transportation and Fleet Management Services, to the podium to share the transportation information.
Thank you, ma'am. This afternoon's transportation update focuses mostly on the bus driver staffing to address the critical driver shortage and plans for opening school on September 9th. Also, information on our new radio system and both electric and propane buses will be briefly discussed. First, we'll discuss the current staffing challenges we face and what we're doing to address the critical shortage in order to limit the impact on our students, families, and staff. We have worked diligently with HR and communications staff in an effort to recruit additional drivers to join our team. We have utilized many ways to get the word out and recruit. We have used social media, signage, recruitment fairs, the care fair, as well as participated in local media interviews, which included individuals in training, current drivers, and supervisory staff. Keep in mind, this critical shortage is felt not just here in Virginia Beach, but also across the United States. Currently, our bus drivers deficit is at 113. Unfortunately, even with our best efforts, our new hires aren't offsetting retirements and resignations. In other words, we don't see this critical shortage of drivers getting any better in the near future, so we've developed strategies to help deal with it. We will continue to work with our HR and communications teams in an attempt to actively communicate and recruit additional qualified individuals to drive. Our transportation training department took the initiative to become trained and certified by the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles to provide and help expedite many of the services which held up the training and testing process. Our staff is utilizing new routing teams to maximize efficiencies in an attempt to limit the impact on our students, families, schools, and staff. Also, the purchase of 36 additional activity, white activity buses are to be utilized by secondary schools to keep us from having to pull regular buses off route and transport some activities and team travel. The above steps that we are taking to overcome the staffing shortage may not address daily absenteeism, which on average is 60 drivers. The new routing teams mentioned earlier are focusing on ridership planning and school bus route efficiency. For the coming year, we will need to maximize the number of students assigned to buses to maximize, to the maximum capacity of each school bus. Drivers will still follow protocols and require the use of masks, clean buses twice a day, open windows when possible to let fresh air circulate. Some buses will make second runs, and our academy buses will pick up additional zone students. As mentioned, schools will need to utilize the white activity buses when possible. It is our intent that all middle schools have two of these buses, and high schools will have three. School-based activity directors have received information on training and the training class schedule. We are taking the above steps to try and overcome the staffing shortage, however, it might not be enough to address daily absenteeism on some days. This is our first summer with the new routing coordinator position, who will continue to look for ways to improve routing to maximize drivers. Beginning Tuesday, August 31st, bus route and stop information will be available to parents by utilizing each student's parent view account. Even given our best efforts, parents, students, and staff could expect fully loaded buses, second runs, and some delays. Parents are encouraged to consider transporting their own students or allow them to walk or bike when safe and possible. The next item we'd like to update you on is the status of our bus radio replacement. Currently, the replacement of our aging analog radio system to a modern digital system is underway. This has been requested by the city for some time since we share the same communication system. It has become hard for them to support the older system. The new system will allow for improved communications, especially in the event of an emergency such as one requiring immediate medical assistance. We value every chance we get to support our environment with the reduction of greenhouse gas. One example of this is by utilizing electric school buses. VB CPS was one of the first systems, or school systems, both here in the Commonwealth and in the country to commit to electric buses and the potential they have. Already, we have profiled this new form of transportation at last year's graduations, recently at the care fair at Pembroke Mall. Also, we have ensured we don't, we didn't rush to put them on the road without our drivers, technicians, and fire department staff receiving proper, proper training on all aspects of electric school bus operation. Some of the highlights of our electric bus integration include all eight buses have been received, training has been provided to the drivers, trainers, technicians, and first responders, and two buses began transporting students in June. These larger capacity buses are assigned to high-density, short-range areas and will help with our driver shortage. Another part of transportation's effort, effort to limit greenhouse gas emissions is that of our propane bus usage. We continue to build on this program to reduce our fleet's output of greenhouse gases. Currently, we have 51 propane buses in our fleet and expect to receive a total of 31 additional buses this year as part of our, as part of our effort to have 200 in our fleet of 750 buses. Our Transportation and Fleet Maintenance Services Department is proud to share that VB CPS was recently named the recipient of $137,480 grant from the Commonwealth of Virginia. This amount is approximately the cost of a new bus. These buses will help to replace old diesel buses and limit greenhouse gas. This concludes this afternoon's update. At this time, we'll be glad to take any questions.
Actually, so we're going to continue with the update?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, as we shared during our update in May, the increasing shortage of bus drivers has our intention, and we continue to implement improvements in our recruitment and retention process. During the course of this school year, not only will we continue our efforts to decrease the deficit of drivers, we will also look for ways to reduce the number of buses and drivers that are needed to transport our students. I know that you have many questions, and we'll be happy to answer them at the end of the brief. But first, we want to share the progress that we've made with our water testing. As a refresher, our initial testing and mitigation of all 48 buildings constructed before 1986 have been completed, and we are in full compliance. Last year, we began a five-year testing cycle for all of our buildings built prior to 2014. That equates to testing about 18 buildings per year. Legislation that became effective in July 2020, and I will add that we advocated for that legislation, required schools to submit sampling plans and water testing results to the Virginia Department of Health, and we're doing that. That legislation also requires remediation and communication when 10 parts per billion of lead content is observed during testing, and we are doing that as well. To support our water quality in our buildings, we've implemented individualized flushing programs at all of our schools. Flushing improves water quality by eliminating stagnant water. As you may recall, during our first round of testing, there was no legal standard that required remediation. There was guidance, but it was confusing for the layman. In coordination with the Virginia Department of Health, we chose to respond to a more stringent 15 parts per billion threshold, and all outlets that tested below 15 parts per billion- that tested between 10 and 15 parts-per-billion in our first round of testing. There are 70 outlets at 29 schools in one administrative building. It isn't required; we are already in full compliance, but we believe that it's the right thing to do. One other area that we decided to improve was around signage at combination sinks in our elementary school classrooms. There were originally 48 gooseneck faucets at 17 schools that we wanted to address. This is a picture that you have now seen multiple times. This is what we call a combination sink. The gooseneck is intended for handwashing, and the bubbler-style fountain pictured on the right is intended for drinking, and signage was put in place to communicate that intention. However, that signage is confusing, as you can see here, so we are testing those goosenecks to ensure that they are below 10 parts-per-billion, and when goosenecks are confirmed to be less than 10 parts-per-billion, we will remove the signage. All right, that's the background information when we entered the 2020 school year, and here are the schools that we had intended to test last year. However, when schools shifted to virtual instruction due to COVID, and after consulting with the Virginia Department of Health, we paused water testing. It is a best practice to perform water testing when buildings are occupied and represent normal usage patterns. That meant that we were only able to conduct testing at 10 of the planned 18 schools. This is okay. Because we tested 48 schools in the first year of the cycle, we are well ahead of schedule. And before I change slides, I want you to note the schools that we couldn't get to last year. And you'll notice that the first eight schools that we will test this year... Sorry, it's displayed, but something's going on there. So you look complete. I'm going to try and advance. It's not advancing. Can you advance it for me, please? Thank you. You'll notice that the first eight schools, the eight schools that we couldn't get to last year are going to be the first eight that we're going to get to this coming school year, and these are the 18 schools that we plan to test for this year. These are the schools with gooseneck faucets and outlets that were between 10 and 15 parts-per-billion during the initial round of testing that we were able to complete last year. And this is the prioritized list of goosenecks and outlets between 10 and 15 parts-per-billion that we intend to address this year. We may not get to all of them this year, but we will continue to work our way through the priority list. We know not only how important our processes are for ensuring the highest quality of water in our schools and buildings, we also know the importance of communicating. We recently sent to our schools another round of Virginia Beach City Public School water testing program pamphlets to ensure that our community has a good understanding of our program. We also communicate with our families leading up to testing when outlets exceed 10 parts-per-billion and when the process is complete. That's the water testing program, the lead testing program. New legislation from 2021 now requires a water management program for the prevention of Legionnaires' disease. You have all likely heard of Legionnaires' disease. It is a type of pneumonia that is caused by inhalation or aspiration exposure to Legionella bacteria in aerosolized water droplets. It is found naturally in freshwater lakes and streams and poses a threat when it grows in building water systems and is then aerosolized and inhaled. When not properly controlled, it is a more significant health risk to our older population. Let me start by saying that we do not have a problem with this. We are simply updating our processes to align with the new law. We consulted with Virginia Department of Health, the City of Virginia Beach Public Works Department, and AH Environmental. Using CDC Toolkit, the CDC Toolkit to conduct a risk assessment, we determined that our 21 buildings with HVAC cooling towers were where we need to focus. HVAC cooling towers are what you see here. On the right, you will see one of our cooling towers. This is the one at Corporate Landing Middle School. But I'm not going to go into great detail on how these functions, but I do want to share the short version. These towers cool water through evaporation, which in turn helps to provide cool air to our buildings. Notice that I said that it does it through evaporation. Water gets pumped into the cooling tower, where a fan aids in evaporation to cool the water. This process creates aerosolized water particles. The picture to the left better illustrates the aerosolized water particles that are created by the process. The goal is to monitor, balance, and treat the water to keep Legionella bacteria in check so that these aerosolized particles do not represent a health hazard. And we have been testing and treating water in those cooling towers monthly since 2016. Moving forward, we will also conduct semi-annual tests for Legionella bacteria. Other preventative measures will include routine temperature checks of our hot water systems. Legionella does not survive well in elevated temperatures. We will also superheat and flush our hot water systems annually. And finally, the flushing program that we already have in our schools reduces risks, and we will perform monthly residual disinfectant testing for 12 months and then reassess based on what we observe. I know that is a lot of information. In short, our water testing program is on track, and we continue to make good progress in our testing. We continue to work closely with our partners at Virginia Department of Health, with the city, and AH Environmental, and further, we are on track to comply with our new Legionella That concludes the Department of School Division Services update. We will now take your questions on both transportation and water.
Well, maybe I'll start with the transportation. Are we done with reaching out to parents to find out who's going to be driving their kids, or is that still a work in progress? And if we are done, how successful or not was that?
Yes, ma'am. We reached out to parents. We had about 97% response rate to that, to know exactly who was requesting transportation this year.
And do we have anything to gauge if we have a higher percentage of parents stepping forward this time? Do we know that?
Mr. Blair might have an information.
Yeah. Yeah, my name is Mr. Blair. I'm the Transportation Coordinator for Routing. I'm down at Transportation. Yeah, during our response rate, we did some number comparisons, and other than, you know, maybe 150 or so students less than in 2019, we're looking at about the same number of students that asked for transportation as did in 2019, which is our last full school year.
So that suggests probably those who are willing and are able, that's remained constant. So, thank you.
Yep.
And Mrs. Melnick.
So, just to go back to the transportation piece one more time, did I hear you say that we're short 60 bus drivers? Or more?
Ma'am, currently, we're short 113 bus drivers.
Okay.
60 is our average absenteeism.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. The average, okay, so 60 people call out every day, average?
Call out, or they could be on family medical leave.
Okay, and so I was happy to hear that you'll be picking up other kids en route to a zone school to try to keep those buses maximized. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I wish I could drive a bus for you.
I tried to recruit the governor Thursday when he announced that he was giving us a check. He said he was going to be out of the job in a few months.
Yeah, he is, that's right.
Hey, come drive for Virginia Beach.
I would if I could.
And I just have a comment for you, Mr. Freeman and your team. Water testing is not a glamorous topic, but none of us pretended to think it's not critically important, and I know memories are short, but it's just so, we're just so thankful for the progress and the commitment to this, and so, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'll pass it on.
Chair, Ray.
Yes.
This is a question for transportation, and I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Blair, and Mr. Freeman for bringing forth this detailed information. As you know, Mr. Freeman, we always have that, not picking up students or students being confused sometime. I know that you pointed out that due to shortage of bus drivers, you're going to be using the white fleet to pick up students, and you're going to use buses, would be taking double shifts, those types of things. What other plan do we have in place? And I know things are ongoing. These are moving parts. I get it. What other plans do we have in place? For instance, when I get a call and have to call you, that a student is waiting for a bus, the bus did not come, or they're sitting there, so what other means of communicating with the families of those routes that is going to happen?
Yeah, we have several tools in the toolbox to help us overcome this deficit and to help parents get through this so that they understand when the bus is going to arrive and if it's going to be delayed or whatever. One of them is the EdgeLog Parent Portal app that is a GPS product similar to the Here Comes the Bus app that we had a few years ago. That should be coming online fully this September for everyone, and it should provide ETAs of a specific student's bus to the bus stop. Other things that we're using is we're going to try to enhance our communication between our dispatchers and the schools, because frankly, the only way to overcome the deficit of drivers is to do double backruns at the school. A bus goes out, does a few bus stops, and then comes back to the school for another load, and then goes back out, so we double utilize the same vehicle. And the schools will control which students are getting on the bus each day to help try to coordinate those efforts to get kids to and from school as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Sanitation is going to be pretty tight as well. I know that the mitigations that we are putting forth that all students need to wear masks, but I'm concerned about those buses that would have to do a double route. So how will they have time to clean up their bus from the second? Will they be able to do that, or is that just something that we're working on? How will that apply to the second route and picking up students, mask-wearing, sanitizing the buses?
Yes, ma'am. So updated information from this year from the CDC is, so it was significant, the cleaning in between routes this year. And as I briefed last week, generally, cleaning once per day is what the CDC recommends. But what we're going to do is we're going to clean the bus midday and at the end of the day, so there's not going to be a cleaning that's going to occur in between runs, which, among other things, will assist in the timeliness of the routing.
Mrs. Anderson.
Will students still be assigned a seat?
Yes, ma'am.
So that we can do mitigation if we need?
Yes, ma'am. So assigned seats, good idea to cohort, and it's easier to contact trace.
Right, contact tracing, that's what I was thinking of. So that's important. I'm very familiar with what we called second loads. Teachers call it second loads. I'm very familiar with that. We used to do that quite often when I first started teaching in Virginia Beach. I don't know whether it was just because we didn't have enough buses or whatever, maybe it was the same reason, but I'm very familiar with it as a teacher, and it's not something that teachers really love, but it has to happen, and so I think if we all pitch in, we can make this happen this year, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready for our next presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next is the new school year plan update and also Canvas adoption.
And Madam Chair, if I may, before this starts. Madam Clerk, are you okay to manage the one school board member who's online, or do you need me to get a Zoom link to help with that?
I'll be fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, again, good afternoon, Chairwoman Ray, Vice Chair Melnick, Members of the Board, and Dr. Spence. Today, we're here to provide more detail about our plan for school year 2021-22 that you adopted at the last school board meeting. Dr. Kip Rogers and Dr. Jean Saltnau will also share more detail from the Departments of Teaching and Learning and School Leadership. So in addition to recent legislation and guidance from recognized bodies of experts whose roles are to ensure public health and also support health, safety, and schools, we now have an emergency order that was issued by the Virginia Health Commissioner that was published two days after our last school board meeting. The emergency order requires all individuals aged 2 and older to wear masks when indoors at public and private K through 12 schools. This slide received a little discussion at the last school board meeting, and we sent you a correction following the meeting. This is the same slide that we shared on August 10th with one notable correction. As a reminder, these metrics are intended to guide decisions on the level of layered prevention strategies, not as decisions to close schools like last year. Under the chart, you can see that we briefed you that the total new cases per 100,000 persons in the last seven days in Virginia Beach was in the high transmission category. That was correct. However, the number that was referenced, 114, was incorrect. It was actually much higher at 178. I had a great conversation with Dr. Jaberry the next morning. His team was already working to ensure that the VDH website clearly and transparently displayed the metrics that we are monitoring. This is what the updated website looks like. This is a screenshot from yesterday. It's now easy for everyone to see the current transmission level, which is high, total new cases per 100,000 persons in the last seven days in Virginia Beach, which is 207.3 as of yesterday, and the percent positivity in the last seven days, 10.6%. We continue to appreciate our partnership with the Virginia Department of Health to solve challenges as they arise. Our plan is to begin the school year with significant layers of mitigation while accomplishing the primary goal of getting students safely back to five days of in-person instruction. We'll monitor community metrics, monitor vaccination coverage, and monitor our contact tracing metrics. We'll collaborate with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health to address outbreaks when they occur to minimize impact, and when conditions permit, we will coordinate with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health to remove one layer of mitigation at a time and monitor their change for a minimum of three weeks. Before removing any layers of mitigation, they will all be in accordance with the law, changes will align with CDC guidance, in accordance with emergency health orders, and decisions will be in consultation with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health using up-to-date data and information. We will also continue to evaluate COVID testing as needed to address potential outbreaks and assist in the safety of athletics. Good communication to all of our stakeholders continues to be a focus. Our website is up and running, and we will continue to add updates as needed. We will also have an employee-focused web-based plan that will be shared with the staff shortly. Both websites are intended to ensure a more user-friendly experience by allowing the user to easily navigate to the information that they need, and they will enable more seamless and accessible updates. Finally, we'll be conducting VB Safe Together information webinars for families and staff who have questions about the school, about what school will like this year. The first of these series will be on Thursday, August 26th, that's this Thursday, and the second will be September 2nd. I would like to turn the brief over to Dr. Kip Rogers for the Department of Teaching and Learning update.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. A lot going on here.
Hello.
Hello, Mrs. Frye. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Ray. I said, Mrs. Frye. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Ray, Vice Chair Melnick, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. I am going to provide you with a very detailed overview of where our students are with their reading performance, with the data that we have available to us right now. I'm also going to give you a very detailed overview of where our students were or are from this summer with their learning opportunities, and then I'll give you a very brief, high-level overview of where we are with our Canvas implementation pilot. Clicker has a mind of its own today. All right, there we go. All right, here we are. All right, so phonological awareness and literacy screening, otherwise known as PALS, that screener assesses the level of a student's risk of having literacy deficits throughout the course of the year. PALS in general measures the children's knowledge of several important literacy fundamentals to include phonological awareness, alphabet recognition, knowledge of letter sounds... to include phonological awareness, alphabet recognition, knowledge of letter sounds and spelling, as well as beginning in first grade. It also provides the oral reading fluency as well as comprehension. PALS gives teachers specific data to plan aligned as well as targeted instruction. The slide in front of you represents PALS results from this past spring for Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and that's depicted by the blue bars, as well as Virginia as a whole in the orange bars. The chart shows that 79% of our kindergarten students, 68% of grade one students and 70% of grade two students met the PALS spring benchmarks for their grade levels. At each grade level, a higher percentage of VB CPS students met the benchmarks than the state overall. And as shown in the note underneath the chart, and it's very small, almost all students in grades kindergarten through second grade were assessed. It's also important to note that a very small percentage of our third grade students were given the PALS assessment in the spring. And it was only 11% of our total number of third grade students. And of that 11%, we had more than half met the benchmark, and that was 55%. Our third grade students were not required to be screened in the spring, although some schools chose to screen them who had been identified as needing additional support because they wanted to collect more data to inform instruction for those students to be able to make decisions for them for summer learning opportunities. This next chart shows the performance for students who were administered the PALS assessment in person as well as those who took the PALS assessment remotely. First, the results show that for both types of administration, at each level, a higher percentage of VB CPS students met the bench- benchmark over those students in Virginia as a whole. And secondly, if you look at the blue bars in both charts, the percentages of students meeting the benchmarks were relatively similar, regardless of whether or not they took the assessment in person or remotely. So for example, 79% of our kindergarten students taking the assessment in person met the benchmark and 80% of those taking the, the assessment remotely met the benchmark. If you notice at grade one, a somewhat higher percentage of remote students, 70%, met the benchmark as compared to 67% of those students meeting the benchmark in person. At grade two, the percentages were about the same, were the same, with 70% of students meeting the benchmark. The slide here shows how students performed on the PALS assessment from before the pandemic to how students performed this past spring. Last spring, the assessment period for the pandemic was in 2000, the last spring assessment for period for the pand- before the pandemic was 2019. And those results are shown in blue on this slide. And at each grade level, there was a noticeable decline in the percentage of students meeting the PALS benchmark in spring 2021 as compared to before the pandemic. The largest decrease was in first grade, as you can see. And keep in mind, those first grade students were in kindergarten during the 2019, 20 school year when the pandemic first started. So what you have here are our reading inventory results. We give the reading inventory to our students in grades three through grades nine. And the reading inventory is a criteria and reference test that's designed to measure reading comprehension to match the students to text so that they can read with confidence as well as with control. Criteria and reference tests are designed to measure student performance against a fixed set of predetermined criteria or learning standards. So the results from the RI are reported to scale scores. So a scale goes from beginning reader of 100 lexiles to 1,500 lexiles. The results shown for the RI are the percent of students who are reading on grade level by the end of the year. And students could have made that, met that benchmark at various testing points throughout the school year. So the blue bar is the percent of students reading on grade level, uh, pre-pandemic and then the, uh, 2018, 2019 year as compared to last school year that's notated by the orange bars. At each grade level, except our students who were in ninth grade last year, the percentage did decline. The largest declines were in the elementary grades three through five, and you'll note smaller declines at the middle grades. This chart compares reading inventory performance for those students who were learning face-to-face and virtual last school year in orange bars. The blue bars shows the pre-pandemic percentages of students reading on grade level for reference. At all grade levels, a higher percentage of face-to-face students were reading on grade level as compared to virtual students by the end of the year, except at seventh grade where the pattern was reversed and at ninth grade where there was no difference. The largest difference between face-to-face and virtual students was in fifth grade where 71% of face-to-face students and 64% of virtual students were reading on grade level. So now I'll transition to sharing more about our summer learning opportunities. At first, I'd like to thank all of the staff in the division and to departmentally who helped make what was a, an extremely successful summer learning experience for quite a few students. We had well over 16,000 students who registered for summer learning opportunities this summer, some of which are still participating in some of the summer activities, i.e. tutoring. So as was shared with you earlier, the 16,000-plus students were made up of about 14,000 who registered prior to the last time I spoke to you, that was July 20th, about the summer. And since then, we have about 1,300 students who are participating in summer leap opportunities where they're having tutoring right now. So that makes up the 16,000. That number does not include students who participate in our elementary, participate in our elementary virtual summer learning boost website opportunity. And I do have some figures here for that. So you'll note on this slide, it represents user statistics for the 2021 Summer Learning Boost Opportunity. You'll remember that this site was designed to support students in pre-K through five. Spanish translations for parents overview videos were also available on that site. And the chart above illustrates the student class link analytics for the summer boost site. The data shown provides a total number of site launches since July 5th, when the site was actually launched. It also shows monthly and daily launches. And you'll note that the data separated into students and staff launches. Students represented about 90, about 95% of all the launches that took place. So if you look at the far right-hand side, it shows 5,760 unique launches per month for the two, for each of the two months. This next slide just gives some basic data that teachers shared on reporting the progress of the student's performance with phonetic principles and phonological and phonemic awareness. Those objectives are a literally small group of objectives that teachers report on each grading period. And those particular objectives were chosen because of specificity to building student word recognition skills to support fluent reading. And you'll notice that they did very well there. The same holds true for our students in grades three through five. Our students did very well there according to teachers. And the teachers answered the question, did the student demonstrate growth in the objectives over the course of the summer learning camp? Here's an example of what they used to collect those data. So the data that they collected was anecdotal. So teachers very much interacted with students to determine where they were. Here's an example for math. And then the last example is what they use for small group reading. Data collection continued with the, in, in the area of, uh, to determine the students to demonstrate growth in the objectives over the course of the summer learning camp for math, numbers and number sense, computation. And you'll notice for grades three through five, there was great growth there. For fifth grade, they focused on patterns, functions and algebra to ready them for middle school. Mr. Park on the right. Teachers also shared the progress of their students with their families. And if you note on the slide in front of you, you'll see that the objective is mentioned as well as anecdotal notes for the strengths and then opportunities for continued growth. That information will certainly be shared with the students' schools this coming year so they can build upon that and plan instruction. Same thing holds true for math. So they got it in reading as well as in math. So family also received feedback in the form of a Google form that was emailed to them that asked questions about the summer learning camp, their experiences, the lessons, the daily schedule, as well as any additional comments that families wanted to make. And I'll pause for just a minute to let you take a look at what's there. We also collected feedback from our teachers from the way in which summer learning was presented this year. And there are several pieces of feedback there, and I'll pause just a minute to let you take a look at those. So we also collected feedback from teachers to assist in designing future summer learning camps. And teachers were asked the question, three questions, one of which was, "Summer learning camp benefit my students by maintaining and/or strengthening key literacy skills for the upcoming school year?" One would strongly disagree, five would strongly agree. And you can see that there were mostly fours and fives on this question relative to support for literacy. Similarly, for math, mostly fours and fives. And for SEL, where teachers focused on providing students with weekly guidance lessons from our school counselors, daily morning meetings and having access to school counselors and integrating SEL into daily instruction. You can see there are mostly fours and fives here with teachers agreeing or strongly agreeing. Now I'll transition to Middle and High School, summer school and summer learning boost opportunities. Students and teachers did very well here. You'll see on this slide is our middle school, summer school pass rate. As you can see, our middle school students taking summer scores, summer courses did well. 89% of our students taking English passed with 96% passing math and science and 95% passed social studies. Similarly, our high school students did very well. As you can see, 87% passed English, 86% passed math, 81% passed science and 91% passed social studies. We also have data for our Virginia Beach digital campus. Our high school students did extremely well. We had a 90% success rate for students who took courses for the very first time in our Virginia Beach digital campus. New to us this year was our summer boost courses where we had offered courses for students to get a jump ahead on the next course that they were registered for this coming, this school year. Those courses were in math and, and science. Those were not graded courses and they were asynchronous, asynchronous provided through Schoology with synchronous support from teachers. So over 500 students shared their experiences with the boost program through the end of course survey. And over 85 respondents believe that the course was very easy to navigate and that it had clear expectations and that they overall felt better prepared for the fall and that they would recommend those courses for fellow students to be able to take the course. You'll see in the bubbles are some examples of some of the things that students said. Those courses are still available to students right now. So students have access to those. They don't have access to the synchronous feedback that teachers were providing throughout the summer, but they nevertheless still have access to those, those courses. And then lastly, some of our students continue to participate in robust learning activities this summer and our continuing, our team continues to work to duplicate those efforts for our students and staff this coming fall. And at your last few updates, particularly on the July 20th update, I gave a very detailed account of what our plans were this, are this, this year for my, adjusting our curriculum instruction as well as assessment. And we are certainly moving forward with that. Teachers are at Tocley, uh, today, learning some of the things that we are supporting them with next year to help our students be successful. And then lastly, is a quick overview or update on where we are with piloting Canvas. And if you remember, we shared with you earlier that Virginia Beach City Public Schools is piloting Canvas as an alternative learning management system to Schoology. And we're piloting it in seven schools, uh, this, this year. Three elementary, two middle and two high schools. Our contract with Schoology does expire in August of 2022. And like other textbook resources, our applications that we use in the division, prior to the contract expiring, we investigate whether or not the current product still meets our needs. Earlier this year, the Virginia Department of Education completed the process of identifying a state-supported LMS and they selected Canvas. And in addition, the VDOE, as was shared earlier, is paying for Canvas for the next five years at least, which will be a significant cost savings for Virginia Beach City Public Schools. So I want to share with you where we are with the potential shift. The graph that's shown in front of you talks about discovering the possibilities, connecting what we've learned from previous implementation with Schoology and then inviting others into the conversation and then identifying priorities for, priorities for action and then sharing our learnings and intended actions with all of our internal and external stakeholders. So after hearing the news, Virginia Beach began to discuss implementations for a change. The Department of Technology, Planning, Innovation and Accountability, School Leadership and Teaching and Learning examined the product for implementation. And early in the process, it was, it was recommended that instruction technology specialists provide input. So we had 28 of our ITSs come together with Dr. Shubridge and her team to discuss the pros and the unintended consequences of making a change. And the ITSs unanimously chose to have a Canvas pilot while moving away from Schoology for the 2022, 23 school year, which would be next school year. From this group of 28 ITSs, the strong leadership and administrative teams were identified and the Department of School Leadership reached out to seven pilot schools to invite them to participate. And we've received amazing feedback and support from those seven schools and their principals. And this slide does show that path. So what you see in front of you now is our roadmap to implementation. As you can see from the chart, we are right now in the identify column where our teams have been working diligently this summer to prepare Canvas materials. The three elementary schools are Kingston, Providence and Red Mill. All three of those schools requested a September start to the pilot. So they'll be starting next month. And we'll be leveraging the use of Seesaw with Canvas as we start this year. We've already begun the process of seeking input from the pilot schools. The ITSs have been part of the design process for how curriculum is loaded. And we are all set to go for the first quarter. And the elementary curriculum coordinators will be a part of a feedback loop, which is a little different from what we did with Schoology, continually improving the migration throughout the course of the school year. Our four secondary schools are Great Neck Middle School, Larkspur, Kempsville High School and Kellum High School. Those schools opted for a second semester start. And if you recall, one of the points of feedback from our Schoology surveys was the desire for a successful grade pack passback for our secondary teachers. The Department of Technology team and our colleagues at Infrastructure, excuse me, Instructure, which is the Canvas parent company that's helping us with the transition, are well aware that the grade passback is a priority for us. And we've asked for volunteers at each secondary school to assist with grade passback in the first semester for a successful second semester rollout. And I know there was a lot, so with that, I will turn the podium over to Dr. Saltmell.
Chairwoman Rye, Chair, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the board, Dr. Spence. I'm here to share the good news that's going on at our schools. And I want to start with the exciting news tomorrow. And that is that, uh, our student activities programs at the high school in full swing and our middle schools launch on August 25th tomorrow with football and cheer. If you look to the screen, you'll see the start dates for all of our sports as well as the dates for competitions and championships. You may recall from my presentation, the last workshop, that this Friday evening, we cook, kick off our football at the high school. VB CPS has and will continue to work with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health to identify situations where screening testing may provide an effective layer of prevention, especially with sports, high-risk activities, athletics, performing arts. In our first and only testing in collaboration with the Virginia Beach Public Department of, Public Department of Health, voluntary testing was offered to athletes of a high school football team and their families after a number of students were identified as close contacts where a positive case had been identified. So aside, the 18 students chose to participate in that voluntary screening. It was held on August 1st. None who tested recorded a positive result, but we still had that ability for them. None who tested recorded a positive result, but we still had that ability for them. Back to student enrollment. As you view the last three columns, and I'll pause so that you can process those numbers before I speak. Recalling that F to F, face-to-face, VVA, Virtual Virginia, the state program, and Virtual Virginia Beach for some of our students who receive special services that cannot be met virtually by the state. About ninety-eight and a half percent of our students will be face-to-face. Our virtual students are going to account for less than two percent. Number of students that we presented with the Virtual Virginia Beach, those students with special services, will be taught concurrently here in Virginia Beach, and that's the forty-seven students that are presented there. I told you last time about our new teachers and what they were doing. Our returning teachers are coming back, and I'll let you take a look at the four bullets that offer sampling of what's going on, what our principals have planned for our teachers. Within our eighty-plus schools, a tremendous variety of very creative, thoughtful, and purposeful meetings and trainings have been planned for our staff as they return. While quite different, the common element which binds them is the emphasis on health and safety mitigations to ensure a healthy staff is in place for our students when they return. Masking, small groups, six-foot social distancing is the norm, along with a sprinkling of some asynchronous or online training. And in most instances, snacks are grab-and-go. You'll see the same when you look to the next slide for our student transition programs. Take a look at those bullets, and I'll go ahead and share with you the great variety that's going on at our eighty-plus schools. We're going to offer as many different options as we have schools. You'll see a variety of open houses, orientations. Transition programs have been planned for our students and their parents as they return to face-to-face learning. Again, while quite different, the common element which binds them is the emphasis on health and safety mitigations. Masking, bringing students into the building in small groups, six-foot social distancing is the norm, as well as a very generous use of outdoor spaces to bring our larger gatherings of grade levels together. Some virtual open houses at both the elementary and secondary levels. This concludes our workshop update, and at this time, we're available to take your questions.
Thank you. And let me just say, the remaining time following this short amount of, these short questions will be devoted to Mrs. Glennetti's presentation, and the collective bargaining will be, will be deferred to another date. So with that, Mrs. Melnick, then, Mrs. Anderson, and Mrs. Franklin.
So Dr. Rogers, do we know, do you know what percentage of students attended public school virtually?
For the summer learning?
I'm sorry, yes.
I could calculate that in a few minutes, but I'm.
Okay, I was just wondering, perhaps the percentage of students that were virtual? And did they not do as well as the ones who were face-to-face? I was just curious, and we can talk about that. You can, you can just email me.
Yeah, I don't have that data broken out for the slides that we have today. But this, what we, what the teachers did was measure whether or not that they saw growth or not in those students, and they were all pretty high.
And I just want to give my deepest appreciation for this incredible summer school program. I think curriculum and instruction is where Virginia Beach shines, and that was evident with, with this summer school program and the results. And, and thank you, because I think as a division, we, we, we truly went above and beyond in, in, in preventing the summer slide and, and in preparing our students for reentry in September. So thank you, thank you very much.
Dr. Rogers, I realize that PALS gives us a window showing us who, who, who is above level, who's below level, that type of thing. But what exactly do teachers have? Can you tell me the program that teachers use to find the accurate reading level of students K through two?
So we are using the PALS. And the PALS is a science research-based, brain-based resource that is supported by the Virginia Department of Education to determine where students are. It is a screener that is designed specifically to determine if students are at risk of being literacy deficient. That is our primary resource. And what we found last year, when we shifted from making the DRA mandatory, teachers still have access to the DRA. So if they'd like to use that at schools, they are more than welcome to do so.
They can still need DRA if they need it?
The DRA is still an option for schools to use, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
What we did last year, if you remember back in June of 2020, we scaled back on the amount of assessments that we provided to students because of the situation that we're in. And what we found at the school level was that the DRA was not giving us the, the level of data that we needed to make just-in-time instructional decisions to be able to better support students. The PALS conversely did that for us. Now, last year was the first year that we had classroom teachers administering the PALS. Previous to that, we had our PALS teachers doing it. And what teachers found this year is that they were better able to control how they were act, were able to act immediately on the results that they were receiving from the PALS assessment that was better aligned to the brain-based research, science, of reading training that teachers have been getting all year. Talked a lot about letters training. The PALS is directly aligned to providing teachers with those data to better support the skills and strategies that they've been learning using the letters data. So teachers still have access to the DRA, and they, some of them are still using it.
Are we still training for, for the teachers to utilize DRA?
So because that's not a mandatory assessment that we agreed on, that's not a division level. We're, we're training our literacy leaders, certainly are trained to support teachers who, and schools who choose to use DRA. But again, we're moving away from that level of assessment because it doesn't align as well as the PALS does to give us that. And PALS does give us the comprehension data that DRA does. We, we, we still get that level of reading comprehension. Now, for students in the upper grades, of course, grades three through nine, we do get the comprehension data, the reading level data from our eye assessment. But the PALS has given us exactly what we need to be able to better support our earliest learners.
I, I just, I, I would love to see that, because I, from my understanding, DRA will give you an exact reading level that you can develop your small group instruction on. And so to me, that's extremely important, especially like for kindergarten and first grade. You really need to know what level. You may have a kid who's reading on level eight and somebody who's just an emergent reader, reader at, you know, level A, for example. And I realize that PALS can tell you pretty much if they're in a level A. You can pretty much tell the level A kids. But to really know whether they're a level eight, or a level ten, or a level twelve, you really need to, to, to be able to do a DRA to assess that, to figure out that exact level. Because you certainly wouldn't want to do, have children in a small group instruction for reading who might be a level eight or a level six, along with a student who's reading on a level ten. It's a big difference in their abilities there. So I just wanted to make sure that teachers, if they still can use the DRA, that, that's great to hear. And I was hoping, you know, if you, if they're not using it, that we, we've come up with something else that we, we could actually zero in on exact reading levels that they would have. So it's good to know that they're able to use the DRA if they need to for that, the lower grades. So a couple, another question is, what are the benefits of switching to Canvas? I realize that the state is going to that, and one of the big different, big pluses on that is the fact that the state is paying, helping to pay for that. But what, you know, and I just like, is there, is there a bigger difference that we can utilize for Canvas? Is, is it helpful for teachers to be able to go into this instead of Schoology that we had?
So you probably don't have enough time for me to list all of the pros and cons, but I'll give you the high-level overview. And I think Dr. Schubridge is on, and she can chime in as well. She probably has a list right in front of her. But essentially, Canvas is more aligned to how teachers and our students learn. For one, I work from the backward, from backwards. Most of our colleges and universities use Canvas as an LMS, and that's a way in which students learn. So it's an easy transition for students who would be going from high school into higher ed. The other thing is the usability, the user-friendliness of Canvas and the way in which the, the modules are structured. Students and teachers alike would be able to have some commensurate way in which things are set up. We have a little more control on how to have a systemic approach to how things are set up within, from one grade to the other. It's easy from a management standpoint. But from a, a user standpoint, it's a lot more user-friendly. So a perfect example of that, as I shared earlier, one of the key pieces that we want to see happen is a grade passback. We were not able to make grade passback work as well as we would have liked it to have had with Schoology. Canvas plays nicely with a lot of other resources that we have access to in the school division. So those are just a few things. Dr. Schubridge, are you on?
She's behind me, come on in.
Yep.
So I'm not, hi, everybody, nice to see all of you. I'm not sure, did he answer your question to what you were specifically looking for, Ms. Anderson?
On Canvas, yes, I think that was good. You might be able to help me better with, with the DRA assessment. I just find it hard to believe that, that people can break down into small groups and not know exact levels that students are in. So was I right in that DRA gives us a better idea of the exact level?
So, well, so Dr. Rogers actually explained it beautifully as far as the purpose of the screener. And I know Dr. Kelly is on, and she can answer that from a principal. I'm just going to speak for just a moment from a principal. The DRA, the PALS screener gives a lot of information about a whole student. And then with my small group instruction, the teachers can then really determine what is the reading level that student should be at. And because the, the House bill identified that there needed to be a screener, that the PALS was the screener that was identified. So again, the DRA is an optional tool. So if a teacher really wanted to see where a student was on that reading level, they could use the DRA for that.
Okay. And my final question is, what plans are in place if a student or students test positive and have to quarantine? Is there concurrent teaching going to be, to go on so that the child wouldn't miss like fourteen days of school? Or I guess it wouldn't be fourteen, but it would be two weeks of school.
We will not be concurrent teaching. The only concurrent teaching that will be taking place is with our students with disabilities who are participating in the Virtual Virginia program. So what we're prepared to do is to provide support for those students who have to go out for extended sessions with asynchronous learning opportunities. And what we have, you know, asked is that our schools stay, make sure that we stay connected with those students so that they can stay up with their studies.
Okay, because that, that's one of the questions that keeps coming up. Parents are really worried and concerned that if their child has to quarantine for, and miss ten days of school, it's, it's a lot of time to make up, especially if it's on a high school level where, you know, I, I, not that it's less important on an elementary level, but on the high school level, it seems like they miss a lot of instruction. So as long as there would be asynchronous learning to be able to be, I guess they would, what would teachers then film that ahead of time? Or how would they?
So asynchronous learning can happen in a multitude of ways. So there are many different ways in which, you know, students can get caught up, can keep up with what's happening currently in the, the classroom. All of our teachers use Schoology anyway, and most of their lessons and activities, if not all of them, are in Schoology anyway. So they would just have to make sure that they pay attention to those students who are out for extended periods of time.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Okay, Mrs. Franklin, and Mrs. Manning.
Hey, Dr. Rogers. I wanted to just ask you about the Virtual Virginia. I know that we had to, our parents had to register by mid-July. But I've actually had quite a few parents that have reached out to me that, for whatever reason, missed the deadline. I'm just curious about the one thousand sixty-nine, which is two percent of our student population that registered. Was that the limitation? Was that?
No, we weren't limited by the numbers.
Okay, so it was just the planning that is causing them to not maybe be able to participate as they are wanting at this point?
So if I'm understanding your question correctly, you mean them signing up prior to the deadline?
Yes, yeah, I've had, I actually have had four parents reach out to me that have decided since whatever, you know, whatever the, the last meeting, that they would like to now go to Virtual Virginia. And, and now they're having to go into a, a waitlist. And I, and I want to say thank you to everybody that has reached out to them and discussed that, those options with them. But, but I just wanted to see.
We do have, you know, families, what we're doing is working with them to make sure that they, if they choose to register for the second semester, that they would have access to do so at, at this point in time, and not have to wait.
Okay, so they, so the second semester is open at this point?
Yes, we are allowing families to indicate that they're interested in second semester.
Okay, that's good to know, okay.
Mrs. Manning, then, Mrs. Felton.
Yes, so my question is regarding the switch from Schoology to Canvas, and it's more of a concern. I know that you weren't here, Dr. Rogers, but a couple of years ago, we had this conversation. And teachers were frustrated that they had to learn a new system. And it's my understanding that we've only been in full implementation in Schoology in all of our schools for the last one or two years. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I know it's been recent. So I have, you, you say there's cost savings, but we also have costs when it comes to training our teachers, training our students. And it's, and it's more than just dollars. It's, it's about the frustrations of the teachers and working condition situations where they're going to be spending a whole lot of time on this when they have so much on their plates. I, I'm very frustrated that we are considering switching to Canvas. And I really wish the board would have a vote on whether or not we, we support this. Because just a couple of years ago, I mean, I need to go back and find the workshop and the conversations that we had on this. But I was reassured that we would not keep changing our system. And I understand that the VDOE has given us this option. But again, I think in the long term, there's not going to be a cost savings when it comes to the switch. I mean, has, has anyone polled teachers to see how they feel about this?
Well, we started with ITSs, and I appreciate your, your, I understand. We've not polled teachers to, to determine whether they wanted to switch to Canvas or not. But I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I think the ITS did have conversations with the individual schools, the twenty-eight that we had. So we had a good feedback that came from them. You know, as with anything that comes about with a change, there's a certain level of uncomfortability, you know, with that. So we anticipate that, and, which is one of the reasons why we decided to do a pilot, to determine whether or not we would actually go to Canvas or not. So in that we're in the pilot phase, it's not saying that we are going to definitely go. I don't see us having, you know, big issues that would deter us from that. But I assure you that the plan is to make sure that we are crossing our Ts and dotting our Is to make sure that we are providing as much support as possible. So, for example, teachers have access to like a digital playground so they can use it now if they want to. As a matter of fact, we've had several teachers who've come to us asking, can they just jump right in and start with Canvas? Because surprisingly, more surprisingly for those that are not familiar than not, many of our teachers are familiar with Canvas and the, the platform because their children that are in college are accustomed to it. Many of our, our staff are in graduate-level programs, they're accustomed to it. So I would be, I don't, I think it's going to be a little bit of growing pain for some, as, as you would expect with anything. But I don't think it's going to be as difficult or as challenging as we might think because of the user-friendliness of the resource and of it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I mean, I'm not challenging the effectiveness of Canvas and if it's better than Schoology or not. I'm just challenging the change that we reassured our teachers that we would be, you know, keeping this for an extended period of time. So I would like to ask for some direct feedback from teachers, maybe surveying directly from the teachers. I mean, you know, I respect the ITS's viewpoints on the user-friendliness of the program, but it's going to be easier for ITSs to, to learn and to get comfortable with it than it is our teachers. but it's gonna be easier for ITSSs to, to learn, um, and to get comfortable with it than it is our teachers.
Yep.
Mrs. Manning, I want to point out, having been in a school for, uh, Schoology, Schoology was the first time our staff was, uh, driving a stick vehicle. I liken it to that. We put them on a learning management system. We had not had them on a solid learning management system before. Uh, making a switch from Schoology, uh, to Canvas is like switching from a Buick to a Chevy. Uh, you, they are, they are very comfortable now in a learning management system. Uh, it's quite impressive what they do in a learning management system. And literally, it's, it's not a, uh, it's not going to be heartburn. It, uh, they're going to see the, it's gonna show immediately, we hope, and this is a true pilot, uh, that this is the best, uh, direction for them. But literally, I would just liken it to changing the type of vehicle you're driving. You're driving your husband's vehicle one day. Uh, very little difference once you're accustomed to a learning management system.
So I appreciate that. I still would like some feedback directly from those teachers rather than just the ITSSs if we could get that.
And we have, uh, the pilot, uh, getting started. So that's be a good group from which to draw that.
And where is the pilot?
Pilot are at, uh, three elementary. Sharon, if you can assist me, is Red Mill, um, Providence, Kingston.
Okay. Just at elementary?
For the first semester.
Okay. 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 All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Felton, and followed by Mrs. Hughes.
Thank you. Um, thank you for the presentation, Dr. Rogers. Um, say way you led into it, I just wanted to know. I see in the bullet that, uh, Dossel had a lot of information to identify the schools. So could you expand on the criteria of the schools that were chosen for this pilot and why?
So when we, um, hi, Mrs. Felton, how are you? So when we met with the twenty-eight ITSSs, part of it was, um, the interest of the ITSSs, their support of that. Uh, we then looked at the collaborative partnership that the ITSSs had with their library media specialists. Did they have a collaborative partnership and did they do and participate in, um, PLCs in buildings? That mattered. Um, and then in talking with Dossel about the list of schools, we looked at the administrative teams. And so what was the, um, instructional leadership teams in those buildings? How much did the principal interact with the ITS, LMSs as well as inside of the PLCs? So that support piece, um, from the top was going to be critical in order to have success in those buildings. And so that was the criteria we used. Uh, we tried to keep the number small, um, and we also tried to look at some feeder patterns. So like an elementary school that fed into a middle school or a middle school that fed into a high school so that as kids moved up, there would be some familiarity.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Hughes, and then Mrs. Riggs.
Okay. I had three and these are gonna be way quicker than they were before. Um, the first one is just the data that Ms. Melnick requested to be emailed to her. I just wanted to request that you copy the whole board on it because I'm interested in that as well. Um, uh, between Ms. Manning and Ms. Anderson, almost all my questions about Canvas got answered. Um, the only thing that I would ask as a follow-up is with the pilot, will there be feedback taken from teachers then? Or is it just, is that just transitioning in or is the pilot so that we can get feedback and decide whether to move forward?
No, that, that, what you said, it's a pilot. Just Dr. Saltinler spoke to that. It's a true pilot. Yes, ma'am. To get feedback to determine whether we move forward or not.
Okay. And then the only other question I had is we do have this year's enrollment. Do we have enrollment numbers for the last two years handy? I would just like to compare those.
For summer?
No, total enrollment of students.
Division enrollment, I believe, is what you're asking for.
Yes, we, for, oh, for division, yeah, we can get that information for you. Sure.
Okay.
Ms. Hughes, it's, uh, in the BUC binder, uh, that Ms. Ingram gave us.
Got it.
So we have that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, Mrs. Riggs, and then I think we're ready to wrap this up.
I'm just, um, I just wanna comment about, uh, new programs that teachers have to, um, uh, tolerate and learn. And as a, a past teacher, technology was always hard. And any kind of new program was always difficult. I know that Larsper, where I was last taught, uh, always asked to be on the pilot, um, which was nice because we learned easier but, and quicker. Um, and I know that, uh, it was something that teachers hated to see, but it's something that, it happens with growth. And I just wanted to mention that and, and to, you know, let people know that, um, it is something that happens continuously in education. There's always movement with new programs constantly. Uh, it's, it's the sign of growth. And, uh, I just wanted to say that. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We thank you very much.
My pleasure.
And as always, members, follow up with questions that come later. So welcome, Mrs. Lanetti. So this is policy five seven, uh, on the, uh, formal agenda tonight.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Camille Lanetti, and School Board Legal Counsel. The presentation I'm going to give you right now is to support the recommendation on Policy Five dash seven, which is titled Non-Discrimination, Non-Harassment of Students and the Supporting Regulations. This is not intended as an advocacy piece, and this is not really intended as my confidential legal advice to you. I am going to try to set for you what the status of the law is so that you have a better understanding of where we are and what you would have to overcome if you make changes to the recommendations that we're going to bring forward tonight. First, let me start with the Virginia Human Rights Act, which is Virginia Code two point two three nine zero zero. This was enacted in 2020. For twenty-three years prior to this being enacted, there were recommendations to the General Assembly to add the categories of sexual orientation and gender identity to the protected categories under the Virginia Human Rights Act. Year after year, the General Assembly voted this down. So we, at that time, were prior, were advising you, at least up until 2015, that you were not authorized to go ahead and add these particular categories to your non-discrimination policies. That did change, the advice might get brought to you after 2015, when the United States Supreme Court decided the Overfell versus Hodges case, which is the gay marriage case out there. At that time, we determined that it would be okay for you to go forward and add sexual orientation and gender identity to your non-discrimination policies. And you have two. You have the five seven, which we're looking at tonight for students, and four four, which deals with the non-discrimination policies for personnel. You did in 2016 then amend your policy and add sexual orientation and gender identity. And you actually did that before the Virginia Human Rights Act was officially amended, which happened in 2020. So when 2020 happened, uh, the requirement came on, you were already in compliance with the Virginia Human Rights Act. What happened last year was that the General Assembly, again in 2020, amended the code again, and they actually enacted a section, twenty-two point one, twenty-three point three. For those of you who got an update on the Policy Five dash seven, there were some, um, coding errors with the, the point three. Sometimes it said point two, point three. That was the correction that was sent out earlier today. This is a pretty detailed policy. I'm not sure if I can pull it up any, um, bigger than it is, but I put the entire, um, statute in there. What the General Assembly did was they directed the Virginia Department of Education to develop model guidelines for the treatment of transgender students. And they specifically included the eight categories you see here, which included they must address compliance with applicable non-discrimination laws, maintenance of a safe and supportive learning environment free from discrimination and harassment for all students, prevention of and response to bullying and harassment, maintenance of student records, five is identification of students, six is protection of student privacy and the confidentiality of students, of information, seven was enforcement of sex-based dress codes, and eight, student participation in sex-specific school activities and, and events and use of school facilities. Activities and events do not include specific, uh, activities, sorry, let me repeat that. Activities and events do not include athletics. That was specifically exempted. The second section, section B, applies specifically to school boards. Each school board shall adopt policies that are consistent with, but may be more comprehensive than the model policies developed by the Virginia Department of Education, subsection A, that just read. So that was the General Assembly making a law out there that one Virginia Department of Education had to give model guidelines and that then the school divisions, school boards were gonna have to adopt the policy. So that is what the General Assembly then required. The guidelines came out in December and Virginia Model Guidance Treatment of, should be on, Mog Allen Treatment of Transgender Students. There was a lot of controversy when this came out. It goes through regulatory process. And my understanding is, I think there were well over six thousand comments, uh, on this. There was a lot of questions as to what was going on, whether they followed the appropriate regulatory process. It was actually a lawsuit, there were two lawsuits that were filed, eventually dealt with the, um, Lynchburg Court. There were, there were groups that were challenging whether the regulatory process had been appropriately implemented. I will say it was controversial at the time. Council School Attorneys was concerned about it. Nevertheless, it was determined by the Virginia Department of Education that these guidelines were finalized on April second, 2021. So there was no further comment in period. Normally with the regulation period, there's what we call notice of intent to, uh, to adopt a regulation. That information goes out, you take public comments, the agency that puts that out then considers the comments and decides whether they're going to adjust the model guidelines. The Virginia Department of Education did not adjust the guidelines after that. That was a very controversial issue, but again, we were stuck with that. Several, um, two major groups filed lawsuits challenging the implementation and attempting to get an injunction to stop the requirement that school divisions have to adopt policies consistent with the model guidelines. Those two cases were consolidated in the Lynchburg Circuit Court. Short explanation is basically the court said you have no basis to bring a lawsuit at this time to challenge the implementation of these policies. We were waiting for that decision to see if there was any chance that they were going to put an injunction or change requirements. Once we knew in July that they were not going to stop the implementation of the requirement to have these policies in place, we then went forward with amending the policies and the regulations developed in the regulations. We were not able to bring it to the Policy Review Committee because they did not have a meeting in, in July. We brought it at the August meeting. At the August meeting, we made the recommendation to implement Policy Five dash seven. And that time, we were not bringing the regulations to the Policy Review Committee because, of course, the Policy Review Committee does not generally look at regulations unless they're mandated by law. Again, the requirements that you had to have to be in compliance with the model guidelines were the non-discrimination and bullying policies, the privacy of information about students, school records, which include names and pronouns for students, dress codes that address sex and gender neutrality, access to activities and facilities, and professional development and training. I'm gonna switch gears a little bit on here. There's a lot of information on the Grimm case. I do not intend the information I give you today to be an advocacy piece, but I do want you to look and understand what the status of the law is right now. Because the decisions you make, we will then have to go and deal with the various, areas of law, both state and federal that deal with this. Virginia is in the Fourth Circuit. The Fourth Circuit has specifically ruled on the issue of transgender students in the bathrooms. That, of course, is the Gloucester case, the Gavin Grimm case. This case has a long procedural history, but there was a decision issued in 2019, and it's very specific as to what it's saying. And I think it's important for you to know what it says because this would be the law if we went to federal court. This is the case that they're going to cite and look at if we're gonna deal with bathroom issues or locker room issues. So I wanted you to know exactly what the court was saying. So that's why I sent you the copy of the opinion. I am not gonna obviously go through the eighty-nine pages of the decision, but I am pulling out some of the areas that I think are important for you to look at because this is how the court is looking at it. Again, this is what the federal court that governs Virginia will look at and be the law. And that's what you're gonna have to deal with if you, based on the decisions that you're going to make tonight. Again, the Fourth Circuit said school boards cannot discriminate based on gender identity and policies related to bathrooms and name changes for students. In this case, this, the last version of the Grimm case involved both the access to bathrooms. Student had added additional charge. He wanted his records corrected to reflect his gender identity as it was at the time he brought the lawsuit. So that was the second area. In that particular case, Gloucester had, by the time the case had come up, had installed what they called privacy barriers in the stalls. So the bathrooms had walls that went all the way to the floor, into the ceiling, was covering though. And the court found that there was no evidence that transgender students are peeping toms, which is one of the things that the Gloucester case or the Gloucester School Board had put forward. They were concerned for privacy for students. The court specifically said there is absolutely no evidence to support that transgender students are peeping toms. There's no evidence to support that cisgender, and that is students that identify with the, their biological genitalia, uh, have, will pretend to be transgender students for the purposes of getting into bathrooms. On there, they also pointed out that sex segregated bathrooms are allowed. So you can have a boys' bathroom and you can have a girls' bathroom. But what you can't do is say you may not go into any of these bathrooms based on what your bi- biological genitalia is. If you have a boys' bathroom and a girls' bathroom and a student identifies as female, no matter what genitalia that student has, the student is allowed to use the bathroom for the gender identity that the student was identifying with at the time. And this was confirmed in a case called Bostic versus Clayton County. Bostic case, um, was actually not a student case. What it was, was looking at Title Seven of the Civil Rights Act. What it did was confirm, and this came out of the United States Supreme Court, that transgender persons, whether gender identity or sexual orientation, if they are discriminated against based on their gender identity or the sexual orientation, that falls under the category of sex, which is protected under the Civil Rights Act, Title Seven. It would also then apply to Title Nine of the Education Act. So therefore, you, there's no further arguments far as the courts are concerned as to whether gender identity and sexual orientation qualify as sex. Some of the quotes coming out of the Grimm case, I think these are important for you to look at because you need to understand how strongly the court felt about this particular incident. The insubstantiality of the board's fears has been borne out in school districts across the country, including other school districts in Virginia. Nearly half of Virginia public school students attend schools prohibiting discrimination or harassment based on gender identity. Although community members espouse similar fears at school board meetings before the anti-discrimination measures, none of those fears materialized. Those Virginia school boards have no difficulty implementing trans-inclusive bathroom policies, explaining that they have been seen on, they have seen none of the negative consequences predicted by opponents of such policies. Further comments out of the, the majority decision. But the law to oppose legitimate justifications for restroom discrimination preventing students who pretend to be transgender from obtaining access to opposite gender restrooms and protecting privacy. Point out that the Fourth Circuit agrees that the board's privacy argument is based on conjecture and abstrication. Third and Ninth Circuits have reducted the privacy-related challenges brought by cisgender students to the shared used bathrooms. They're pointing out that other circuits are also agreeing with them. And the Grimm case goes on. Further comments. The board's proposed policy was concocted amidst a flurry of emails from apparently concerned community members and adopted in the context of two heated board meetings filled with vitrolic, off-the-cuff comments. Parents threatened to vote out the board members if they allowed Grimm to continue to use the boys' bathroom. Specifically, the court addressed what the Gloucester County had done. The Gloucester County School Board had said bathroom use was going to be limited to the biological gender that the, and they were defining biological gender as being what was listed on your birth certificate. And the court noted that policy, this particular policy constituted discrimination because they are not supported by the current research. If you read the Grimm case, there's many, many pages about research as to whether there is such a thing as biological gender. What the court focused on was gender identity is what determines which restroom a student can use. Again, it's going on in the Grimm case. Further comments were hypothetical fears such as predator myth are merely that, they are hypothetical. Schools have discovered their biggest opponents were not students, but adults. And one of the phrases I thought was particularly telling from the court's opinion was, "How shallow a promise of equal protection that would not protect Grimm from the fantastical fears and unfounded prejudices of his adult community." There was a concurring decision to this from Judge Nguyen. I'm not gonna go through all the details on it. I strongly suggest you read this. This, in my mind, put, uh, characterization on where the court was going and is pretty dramatic. But the board has persisted in offering hypothetical and pretextual concerns that have failed to manifest either in this case or in a myriad others like it across our nation. I am left to conclude that the policy instead discriminates against transgender students out of a bare dislike or fear of those others who are all too often marginalized in our society for the mere fact that they are different. As such, the, the policy grossly offends the Constitution's basic guarantee of equal protection under law. Yeah, and there are a few other phrases. I'm not gonna go through all of them. You can read them. But you can see that the court very strongly felt that this formed discrimination. This would be the standard we would have to overcome if we were to challenge and. This would be the standard we would have to overcome if we were to challenge in a court any policy that does not support the protection of transgender rights. Yeah, and one of the things that the court were very strong about, felt very strong about, what they call the transgender predator issues. And they were liking it to discrimination in the 1950s. And they very strongly pointed out, there is no research or no evidence to support the transgender predator myth. And transgender predator myth generally comes down to students would go into a bathroom to pretend to be one gender with the intent of sexually harassing or assaulting students in the bathroom. The court has, the Fourth Circuit has been very clear that they have not found support in this. They listed multiple studies. They have not been able to identify any research supporting this. So that particular issue is not something the Fourth Circuit is going to entertain. Again, going through, Judge Nguyen made his final comments in his concurrence. "The Constitution cannot control such private prejudices, but neither can it tolerate them. Private biases may be outside the reach of the law, but the law cannot directly or indirectly give them effect." Now, there's a strong dissent, Judge Naomi Harris dissent. Notice that you can segregate on, on sex, as he's pointing out, there are times when it is appropriate to segregate on sex. And that, in his opinion, the majority decision was trying to implement policy and not applying the law. So that is the dissent opposing the decision of the majority opinion. Bringing to Policy 5-7. Again, all we are putting in Policy 5-7, other than some scrivenor changes, would be, um, authorizing, the school board is authorizing the superintendent to develop regulations or guidance to comply with the model guidance on treatment of transgender students. Yeah, as I point out in 5-7, this is your non-discrimination policy and anti-harassment policy. You had this in place for many years. The highlighted section on gender orientation and sexual identity, you already committed to that protection for the students, transgender students, and that was in 2016. So what we did, in addition to policy, how there is recommending that we add the sentence, "Authorizing the superintendent to develop the regulations, protocols, and training," is we're suggesting that you, um, that the superintendent adopt a regulation, 5-7.1, Treatment of Transgender Students. When I looked through your policies and your regulations, I was looking to see what we do not already have in place in a policy or regulation that would be required by the model guidelines. Clearly, we have confidentiality of students, that is a purpo, family, educational rights, and privacy protection. We've had that forever. What I did do is in, in Regulation 5-7, is make it very clear that information concerning the gender identity and sexual orientation of a student must be maintained confidential. We added a section that more clearly defined how you would deal with names and pronouns for students. This is, uh, an area, we already do this, for the most part, with students, but we do it on an individual basis because the statute required, we have this in here. We put this in the regulation. We did a little bit more defining out of what participation and activities would do. Again, it does not apply to competitive sports for programs such as VHSL, some of our outside rowing agencies across, um, groups that have it because that was specifically exempted from the statute. When I looked at the requirements that we wouldn't have for restrooms, we have actually never had what I call a potty policy. We do not have any regulation of policy that talks about use of restrooms or lockers, but as that was specifically required by the model guidelines, we went ahead and added it, a new, or suggested a new regulation of 544.2. 544 is your sexual harassment, sexual abuse statute. It's basically referred to as our Title IX statutes on there. It seemed appropriate to put this regulation there. And at 544, we would be suggesting that use of restroom and locker rooms allow students to use gender restroom and locker rooms that the student identifies with. It would allow any student to request accommodation such as a single-use restroom. If the student required any other accommodations or wanted a different situation, we would speak with the administrators. That has always been our practice. In the past, we've always handled this individually. We speak with the student and their family, and we determine how best to make sure that child can access the education. I added the menstrual supplies required in all restrooms. That is actually not in the model guidelines. That is a separate statute that went into effect last year. That's actually a General Assembly statute that requires that you provide menstrual supplies in all ass, in all restrooms for middle and high school. And the reason for adding this was to not put them just in the female bathrooms. You also have to now put them in the male bathrooms. It did give us the, we didn't have to put them in elementary bathrooms. We just had to make them available to elementary students. Again, that doesn't come out of the model guidelines. That comes out of a separate statute that the General Assembly adopted. But we added it here because we were speaking about bathrooms. Again, that, the requirement to provide menstrual supplies has been in for several years, and we have had them. We just needed to incorporate them into our policy. And again, the non-discrimination, anti-harassment, and the use of bathrooms and locker rooms was added to this regulation. The other area that we did not specifically address in our policies was field trips and extracurricular activities. We've had built, we've had a field trip policy and regulation. So what we did is I took a look at 656.1 to clarify how we were going, oops. Field trips, field class curriculum and extracurricular activities, specifically on accommodations. We flushed this area out a little bit more. Want to make first, if you were going to do an overnight trip or a trip that involves somewhere where you had to use changing facilities or staying over, that's important that the trip coordinators think about this ahead of time, that they put the information out well ahead of time to anybody participating in the trip and their families so they can make appropriate decisions. Again, you have to allow access to facilities based on the gender identity that the student is identifying with. And you also, our suggestion would be that you make accommodations, including requests for single-use rooms. You cannot pursuant to the model guidelines require that a transgender student have a single-use room, but you can certainly talk with the students and work with the students. Again, this is not unusual process. We've dealt with this for years. We have ways of dealing with this. But again, this is going to, and this regulation will detail more information about how we're going to do that. We also made it clear in this policy that you had to address health and disability concerns. Again, if you have a student in a wheelchair and you're going on a hiking trip, how would that student be able to participate in that? If you have a student with allergies, what are the backup programs to deal with the student with the allergies on that trip? We went ahead and added that to sections. So this isn't straight transgender, it's just the considerations you need to have. And I'm not sure why my title looks so weird here, but, um... Policy 4, 544, going back. Again, last year, the General, the General, the United States Department of Education required that you update Title IX regulations. If you were with me last year, you know how comprehensive that was. Very, very complicated regulations came out of the U.S. Department of Education. We had very little time to incorporate them. We essentially had to completely rewrite the policies. We had to create procedures. We had to do an extensive amount of training and procedures, but all that went into place. And we adopted that last fall in 2020. So those protections in place. And again, I mention that because the current case law states that when you use the word sex, it, and that's news of it falls under Title IX, it includes gender identity and sexual orientation. Again, all those procedures went into place. We are monitoring them. I will tell you that I was contacted by the U.S. Department of Education last week, that we had an inquiry into our policies last year. We had, um, sure, then we were adopting them, and they're coming back, checking on them. So I know as of this week, they're asking us to provide further information. I don't have a pending complaint by a student, but I do know that the U.S. Department of Education is watching this. I bring this to your attention because there's a lot of concern as to what the Virginia Department of Education would be doing or the General Assembly would be doing. You also need to consider that the U.S. Department of Education is very much involved in this. And these are very complicated and difficult investigations when we have to deal with that. I will also point out to you, and I think I sent some of you a link the other day. Last week, the U.S. Department of Education and the United States Department of Justice put out a joint YouTube address to transgender students. And they were very clear in that, that if a transgender student feels as though that they are being discriminated against for the use of bathrooms, activities, or sports, that the U.S. Department of Justice is prepared to step in and file lawsuits against them. So again, I know there's been a lot of talk by the Virginia Department of Education. You need to also be aware that the federal government is watching this. Again, the President's Office, along with the, um, U.S. Department of Justice, the Office of Civil Rights, also has put out several comments, pages, and declarations in the last three months about their intent to enforce protection for transgender students. So we've got the federal executive branch. You've got the prosecutors for the U.S. Department of Education and Department of Justice are prepared to go forward.
Yes, Mrs. Lynetti, may I pause a moment just to consult with my colleagues? Obviously, you're going to cover this to some degree again during action. So is the choice now to end now, and she'll start at the beginning later, or to take another? You, you, I think you need at least another 10 minutes to finish.
There's actually not a lot of information here. What I would summarize, I could just summarize it for you, is that this is not just a matter of the state government. It is a matter of the federal government also coming in. So I want you to be aware that there are multiple agencies doing this, and I'm happy to cover this again during the regular formal agenda.
All right, then, that's what we plan to do. Thank you. So workshop is adjourned, and, well, before we adjourn, I do need two minutes. If I may take the latitude of going back to admin matters. Because with Mrs. Melnick and I reaching out to you all about various meeting, um, formats, as, uh, ti, whether it's with, with regard to, uh, the time allotted to speakers, the total amount of time allotted to speakers, uh, what else did we? We had a series of, of questions, right? Agenda, non-agenda, and, and so it's kind of a hanging fruit item. And there was a suggestion made, and, and whether, there is a three-week stretch now between this meeting and the next meeting, whether we should plan on a special meeting just to focus on and get, at least find some common ground of whether we do want to make any changes or not. So, uh, that's what I'm throwing out there on if there's the will to do that. And we can talk about, I can throw out a few possible dates after tonight so that we, we do settle on a date and get a proper notice out, or any, any other thoughts quickly? Now's the time to, to just share your, but I mean, I, I got a colleague from a, I mean, a phone call from a colleague just coming here, you know, and obviously, there is a concern about the, the length of the meetings presently, about working the public who work and want to watch the full meeting, the staff in this building who work and have to show up by 7:00 or 7:30, school board members who are gainfully employed. And, and so that, that's, that's all part of this, too, that I think we just at least need the chance to talk about it collectively. I don't know where it will, none of us know where it will land. We'll see if there's any common areas that most of us can agree on. So is there a consensus for me, for us to throw out a few? What is about a special meeting?
Sure. No, I, go ahead.
Or any others?
I'm, I'm all right with that. We need a special meeting to, to, to dwell on this? That's fine with me. I was going to ask, uh, about the number of speakers, if we were going to have any type of special timeline tonight.
Tonight is, there's no change. It's too, too late, you know, there's, we've had many more than we have tonight. It's just too late, really.
Okay.
Had it been, you know, twice the number, we, we might have suggested something, but, um... Okay, then, we'll, we'll throw out a few dates and see where we land with that. I, I really hadn't discussed it even with the Vice Chair yet, but it was just a, somebody had posed that as a thought in the last 24 hours, and I forgot to mention it earlier, so... Okay, thanks. So, uh, workshop adjourned, and we'll reconvene in here for formal meeting at 6:00.